The first item on the agenda is the approval of various minutes from prior meetings. Transcript of those meetings will serve as the minutes. And we have four items. I need a motion for approval, and I can take these all as a group if the board refers, or we can do them individually.
I so moved to approve the four, August 5th, or September 16th, September 23rd, and September 1st.
Motion is made by Mr. Ketter. Is that, you understand, seconded the motion? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion then carries. And now we'll turn to the subsequent item on the agenda, which is C-21080, the Halliday petition. Halliday is a conditional use request for a recreational facility. This is a matter that comes from Winfield Township, so Mr. Murphy, you can usually allow you to make a motion, if you like, for Winfield.
Yeah. I note that. (inaudible)
Sort of take that over. Let me just argue here.
I note that we grant the use for recreational facilities subject to a condition.
Second to that motion. And by Ms. Anderson. So Mr. Murphy makes the motion, Ms. Anderson seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion then, please.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I think the problem here is, get this conditional use, you have to prove it's a recreational facility. And even in the loosest sense, I do not see how this comes into the purview of a recreational facility. It's to store the animals, and then she goes from out there, from that facility, to other areas. So it's on that basis that I don't think there's a proof to grant the conditional use.
So I, initially, I had exactly the same view. I don't, I have no idea what the legislative intent here was, but conditional use is according to the ordinance, include recreational uses, which is the principal use of the property, but then it lists various uses which would encompass stables and riding academies, et cetera. So while I think no one ever imagined, no one contemplated this, I think it would be difficult to deny, given the language of our ordinance, but that is a very loose interpretation, and we have to be a little creative to take a position other than that which Mr. Ketter suggested. If the matter is approved, I have several other conditions that I would include. So let's first, shall we resolve this first issue about whether this boarding of animals and stables is within the concept of a conditional use? Does anyone have anything they want to say on that point? I don't see anybody.
I do close to. I would, I am of the opinion, after considering the fact, that we are essentially boarding animals there, though there may be some recreational use of the animals by Ms. Halliday. It almost appears to be like stabling of animals, and there are a lot of animals, so I'm having some difficulty with that concept.
No, Rich, you concur with Mr. Ketter's point. Yes. Anyone else want to weigh in on that? Okay. I'm not sure what the, how the, just the way to proceed, but I think, I'd like to suggest that the various items that have been enumerated as conditions that were referenced in Mr. Murphy's motion, number three is that the relief expires after five years, or the earlier of five years, or when the structure or use is destroyed, or the structure is voluntarily removed. That's our normal condition. I don't think it works here. I think it is that the use be discontinued. So A and B, the structure is not, the structure has nothing to do with it, because this is a proposed recreational use, so that's my only word with that. Does anyone have that same sense, or, and I understand that this question is still pending, but my purpose here is to narrow down the various conditions that we will put if this is voted in, and then take a vote on the motion. And that vote on the motion will resolve the issue that Mr. Ketter raised, and Mr. Hakim.
One of the questions, you mentioned the structure, or comments that it's destroyed, after the use. I think we need to clarify, what is the recreational use? Because that's gonna, if it doesn't deny it, that's gonna lead a brown work for conditions. So what is the use? Somebody just riding a horse on their property, I don't think comes in with the purview of recreational. I guess when everything else fails, we don't have the legislative intent for us, but my reading of the dictionary, recreational is not just somebody doing something on their own property for one. To get this on the ordinance, you're expanding to create a conditional use to expand the ordinance. I think that, where you mentioned the stable, if you had horses, and they did riding programs, and they did shows in the stable or in the arena area, you're in the recreational. But I think just having them there, and maybe having to walk them, everybody has to walk, you walk your dog during the day, is that a recreational activity? Not in my mind, and not in the intent that I would think it was passed. So that's my problem until I, I'm not interested to go forward until we clear up the use.
Okay. Well, I thought about going at it in a different way, but I'm happy to. If there is a consensus that this doesn't qualify as a recreational use, that ends the discussion. Can I hear from the board as to whether there is appetite for considering this at all as a recreational use? And I will suggest to you that if we determine that this is not an appropriate recreational use, the Development Committee or the County Board may determine that it is a recreational use, so that any conditions that we would propose to include, and I, as I said, I have several others, would not be reviewed by the Development Committee or the County Board. So if we determine that it is not a recreational use, I would like to have an advisory set of conditional use, conditions, to go forward to the County Development Committee and County Board. So does everyone, do we understand what I'm saying here? We say forget it, this isn't a conditional use, because it's not a recreational facility. County, and the County Board considers, can overturn that, do whatever they want without the benefit of our proposed conditions.
I agree with you. We can, if we vote on that, we can give them all purpose.
All right, all right, let's do that. So let's get, this is an unofficial vote, but I would like an expression from each of the members as to whether they believe we can proceed with this as a recreational facility conditional use, the understanding that the petitioner has asked to board animals on this property, not have any public access, not have any activity which generally was considered a recreational use around this property. So, Mr. Murphy, you made the motion, which way do you want to go?
I can't hear.
Mr. Murphy, he wants to withdraw the motion. And then Ms. Anderson, you seconded, do you have, you want to make any statement, or?
No, no statement. I mean, I'll make the motion, and if I can second.
Make the motion. All right.
I'll make the same motion.
Then Ms. Anderson makes the same motion to approve, subject to the conditions. Is there a second to that motion? I don't see a second to the motion.
And I'll make a motion to deny this, failure to recreational use.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion to deny by Mr. Ketter, seconded by Mr. Hakim. Basis of the motion is that this does not qualify under the proposed use, namely boarding these several animals, does not qualify as a recreational use, under the language of the ordinance. Let's take a roll call vote on that motion.
Member Ketter.
Aye.
Member Hakim.
Aye.
Member Murphy.
Aye.
Member Moran.
Aye.
Member Schultz.
Aye.
Member Anderson.
No.
Chair Cal.
No. The motion passes by a vote of five in favor, not opposed. I must say, this is difficult for me to answer that. What did I say?
Two.
Five, two.
Five, two. You said five in favor, not opposed.
Oh, so used to saying not opposed.
Okay, just want to hear.
Five in favor, two opposed. So now, I would very much like the consensus of the board to consider the following conditions. Condition one, as alternatives, in the event the County Board or Development Committee overturns our view. Those conditions would be, the property be developed in accordance with the petitioner's site plan, number one. Number two, the conditional use shall, in your, only to the owner, Sarah Halliday, terminate in the event that the owner discontinues operation of the proposed subject recreational use on this specific property. Number three, the conditional use expires after five years. Four, the first common of the use being discontinued, I don't care about the structure, the property is conveyed to new ownership, and I would add to our usual, other than an entity owned or controlled by Sarah Halliday. So if she grants it to the Sarah Halliday Trust, or something, you know, for a state planning purposes, or some such thing, or she creates a corporation, it would still be, it wouldn't constitute a condense. Number four, the owner is to apply for and receive permits, et cetera, our standard condition. Number five, that in conjunction with the submission of the building permit, the owner provides a landscaping plan, standard condition, as written. Number six, the owner developer shall not operate a business on the subject property, as has written. I would add that the, any recreational use be limited to the onsite care and boarding of the number of animals that are articulated. Number six, seven, recreational use shall apply exclusively to Sarah Halliday and housing and maintenance of the following animals, that's eight horses, thirty-six ponies, twenty-one miniature goats, fourteen miniature sheep, three miniature llamas, three miniature alpacas. Next, I would add the condition that the general public shall not be invited to the property for purposes of visiting the animals, or any activity associated with the animals. Next, all activities related to the conduct of the Halliday operation of the facility, I'm sorry, all activities related to the conduct of the business that Ms. Halliday operates relating to these animals be conducted off-site. I'm trying to pick up the point that she articulated in the testimony, that all she does here is board these animals, care for these animals, and turn them away to other sites. Right, it articulate that they're involved in that condition, the staff can work on it as they present it to the County Board, should the motion be passed. And then finally, that all of the codes and ordinances of the county be complied with. So the conditions that I just articulated, in the, are, in my view, should, we should vote on them as alternatives to go to the County Development Committee in the event that they overturn our decision. Appetite for that, I have a motion to that.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Anderson, second that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Murphy, I think I saw first ran. Well, he had a stand-up. Oh, that's all right. It's his, it's his judgment, but yeah. Okay, so is there any discussion on that motion? Okay.
Or a question?
I'll just speak loud. One of the things that she proposed, she was going to do was the maintenance of cleaning up this, everything daily and stuff, and I think if we're going to allow, if the County can allow it, or if it was an alternative, I think we should put her feet to the fire, find something like that. So I would add to it that she be required to do the maintenance of the paddocks and things, as she hopes. That's likely to vanish, I'm not quite sure, but.
Okay.
Can you handle that, Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Yeah. Dayly care and maintenance. Yeah. Well, it's G, since like, that's a kind of a little bit G. Yeah, so about the additional condition from item G. All right, so that's finally me ready for a motion. We have a motion on this point, so we get, and Mr. Murphy seconded, so if it's okay, it's okay, we make your in the second, that we add that additional item. If there's no further discussion, please take a roll call vote on this advisory set of conditions.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Murphy.
Aye.
Member Moran.
Yes.
Member Hakim.
Aye.
Member Ketter.
Aye.
Member Schultz.
Aye.
Chairman Cal.
All right. This time, I'm sure I have the numbers rated seven to zero. So the motion passes. We transmit to the County Development Committee, that takes us, I don't think we have any old business, any new business that I would call public comment, is there a public comment that's going to be seen?
Nothing, nothing in writing.
Nothing?
Nothing in writing, but we might have people here.
Okay. Well, there are two rules, I think, all open meetings, is that we can take public comment. So anybody that wants to make a public comment, the microphone is available. I don't think it has to be made on the road, does it? It's just.
Well, I'm Steve Borowiak, the next our neighbor through this operation.
Would you spell your last name?
B-O-R-O-W-I-A-K, and the first name is Steve. I'm in an area to live next door. I also sent Dr. Bohas the document of our argument, and I'm sorry, board members said she has to take a look at that, see.
We don't, the public comment at the public hearing for the case is one where we would answer your questions, but public comment now is just, you could talk about that you think there ought to be a fourth color added to the color of the.
No, my, my comment is that, that we had submitted documents, and I just want to make sure that they were delivered to the board members to read, from our point is the argument and closing statement. The other thing is that this location represents a public safety hazard with the size of the trucks and trailers. Keep in mind that to go ahead and move these animals, it requires, I mean, I have pictures of the vehicle that we'd like, these five or six trucks and trailers coming out of there between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we're not going to respond to you at all, and we've already undertaken the entirety of our involvement in this case, and I don't want to tell you what to do, if you want to make a statement about this, for the record, that's fine, but what he, the decision makers now, the next level is the Development Committee, so you could, I'm just telling everyone, if you want to talk about this case, you should address your remarks to the Development Committee, probably in writing. I don't think the Development Committee provides public comment that they're here.
Public comment, but no. Testimony.
Yeah, it's like this, this, this new confusing requirement for public comment after the case is over.
Right.
So.
What I'm saying is, we followed the procedures that were required to make an argument and statement, I appeared before you guys on this, I heard you, without legal representation. I did that and filed the documents in time, and the question is, in the residential area, each of you should go home today, get out of your cars in your driveway, and look around and smell, and look around and ask if you want this to be your neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to make a statement? There's too much, why don't you just queue up here, and then take your, take you, again, uh.
Sure, I'm going to make a public comment. My name is Nancy Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S. I'm a resident of Wheaton. I learned of this situation by being a cyclist in the area. I have cycled that trail in front of this property that is up for this discussion thousands of times, along with thousands of cyclists that are friends of mine. We are a very active community, and of cyclists in the area, and I can tell you, with the minimal entrance and exiting out of this gentleman's property, several of us has almost been hit by one car in a residential area coming and going from, I'm sorry, Steve Borowiak's property. Now, I can only imagine, if you're going to open the use and expansion, as you're setting up to the, of the committee here, to expand the use to recreational use beyond who knows what, there's going to be not one car a day, two cars a day, there's going to be ten, twenty, I don't know how many. And as a cyclist, that's a huge danger to me, and my fellow cyclists. I can only say that we will pursue, we will pursue legal action if we get there, and what is going to happen to that trail in front of that property? We have quite a community of folks that are in the area, so that is my comment as a public citizen, as a citizen of DuPage County for thirty-plus years. So again, I don't think anyone has been consulted about that, I'm just concerned as a citizen. And I will go on to the next level with a group, to whatever Development Committee this is, that is going to go ahead and consider this change of use.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next. I didn't say this, but comments are typically limited to three minutes, as a standard rule, but I'm sure I didn't expect comments to go beyond that, so I didn't put them in the limits. All right.
Hello, and thank you for your service on this committee, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be recorded in the minutes, because I know, as this goes on to further, just like I read the minutes of the previous event, folks will read our comments in the minutes, and I appreciate that.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, Connie Schmidt, S-C-H-M-I-D-T, resident of Warrenville in Winfield Township. I own horses, and I board them on my property, but I'm aware that it's one horse for one acre of land, and a half acre for each additional horse. This petitioner wants eighty-four animals on less than three acres. I haul out, in a dumpster, manure from one horse. It costs me over a hundred and twenty dollars a month. So the amount of manure that's going to be created is incredible, number one. It's a huge amount of animals on that. This is a, if you look at this woman's website, it's a commercial business. She has several Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts can come do badges there, she also has several sessions of summer school, and camps during the summer, so unless she's going to take a big hit in her income, I don't know if she's going to pay for this manure removal, but it, I don't see how the commercial business can survive with the stipulations that she has stated she would follow. Leslie, she has said, so huge impact on the residential property next door, she has said, "I'm going to trail ride out the back of my property." There is no trail out the back of her property, and anyone who has ever served on the Forest Preserve Commission Board would know it is illegal to bushwhack a trail in order to join some other trail elsewhere. So not only is she going to be a not-a-good neighbor to the residents on one side, or the trail users across the front, but also to the forest preserve community that shares her bed. So thanks for recording it, and, you know, we are responsible, forest people are responsible community members, and this is an irresponsible request.
Okay, thank you very much. You, sir, will be the last.
I'll make it, Chuck Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M, from Warrenville. We have animals, we have dairy goats and ducks and chickens for 4H, grandkids, my kids raised them, but way too many animals on this property, it's a health hazard, and it gives us a bad name when you compile all those animals on a property, then somebody wants to put maybe one or two extra chickens or ducks on their property, and all of a sudden, all the neighbors say, "Well, look what happened over on that property." So it is a health hazard. It's like putting a cesspool next to somebody's house. Doc Steve keeps his place up very clean, very nice, the neighbor, and that is a health hazard, you'd have to haul that manure out of there every day. You have a high school that comes in and out every day, and that is a big hazard for those kids. A lot of them are new drivers, too, that are going in and out of that high school. So it is a safety issue also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment is concluded, so I guess we'll work back to common. Okay? Very, it's sort of, it's kind of like last call here, folks.
Thank you, thank you for hearing me. My name is Michael Lach, L-A-C-H. I'm a retired civil engineer from Bowland, Joe Lach and Associates, and DuPage County was a client of ours for, oh, right, twenty-five, thirty years, and we did much, much work here, stormwater related, but primarily transportation related. And the points that were brought up here about the, these vehicles entering and leaving, and I know, you know, big horse trailers and all of that coming in, and that's right in, right out, right here, it is a very dangerous situation out there. Traffic control-wise, the speed limit is forty-five, and one of them loves to have their police out there clocking people and giving tickets, so everybody's going way more than forty-five miles an hour. So I just want to make that from a professional standpoint, this is a very dangerous situation, and to all of the other commentary that everybody had about health. Thank you.
That's it, I'm going to declare that we're adjourned for this evening. Thanks to everybody for their comments, and I understand that we voted this down, right? Okay. Good. We're adjourned. Okay, good, we're adjourned.